Good evening and welcome to the July 18, 2017 regular Salem City Council meeting. It will now come to order. The invocation will be given by Steve Faber from our Parks Department. And please remain standing then for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight grateful that you love and care for us. Father, we always trust you and we have faith in you. We don't always understand why things are the way they are. But we ask tonight that you be with us in this meeting, that the things that we do and say are pleasing to you and that the right and best comes forward for this community and all who live in it. We're grateful that you blessed us. We're grateful that you show us your favor. We're grateful, Father, that you always love us. Thank you for giving us wisdom and guidance, help us, Father, always to know what's right. And we trust you when we don't understand that you'll lead us to the right place. Thank you, Father, for hearing our prayer. We pray for those that are sick in our community, that you would give them healing and health. We pray for those that are grieving, that they might know comfort and peace. Father, thank you for being our friend and for your love that never ends. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Brown? Mrs. Dickey?
Here.
Mr. Gall?
Present.
Mrs. Mancuso?
Here.
Mr. Knoll?
Present.
Mr. Paparides?
Present.
Mr. Whitehill?
Present.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to excuse Mr. Brown. I understand he's ill.
Is there a second on that? Mrs. Dickey? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Dickey?
Yes.
Mr. Gall?
Yes.
Mrs. Mancuso?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Mr. Paparides?
Yes.
Mr. Whitehill?
Yes.
All right, he is excused. Everyone's received a copy of the minutes from the July 5, 2017, meeting. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to those minutes? Seeing none, those stand as approved. There are no petitions and remonstrances this evening and no receiving of visitors. Move on then to Report of City Officials. The mayor advised me that he does not have a report this evening, but will answer any questions if anybody has any. Seeing none. Law Director, Attorney Zellers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also do not have a formal report, but I would be happy to answer any questions.
Seeing none, thank you. The Auditor, Mrs. Brothers, advised me prior to the meeting that she has no report this evening, but will be happy to answer any questions that anyone may have. Treasurer, Dr. Conrad? Safety Service Director, Mr. Kents?
Mr. President, I also have no report this evening.
Any questions for Mr. Kents? Thank you. Utilities, Mr. Weingart?
Mr. Chairman, that is the council order. Before you hear this evening is the ordinance to allow the utilities commission to purchase 6.88 acres of land on Pennsylvania Avenue. This property is adjacent to the present property of, I'm about to say, the utilities department for the future expansion of the prison plant and because it is available. If there's any questions, I'll attempt to answer those, or I can have a site here if anybody wishes to see this thing.
Any questions for Mr. Weingart? Seeing none, thank you. Parks Director, Mr. Faber?
Mr. President, I have no report this evening, but I'd be glad to answer questions however I have.
Any questions for Mr. Faber? Seeing none, thank you. Council Clerk, Mrs. Bricker? That concludes Report of City Officials. Move on to Report of Standing Committees. Finance, Mr. Whitehill?
Thank you, Mr. President. My committee is not meant to have no report. However, I will be scheduling a meeting for early September. There's some appropriations, as I understand, from the auditor and also to begin the budgetary process for 2018.
All right, and we have Resolution Number 44 and 45 this evening?
We do.
All right. Does anybody have any report from streets, alleys, and sidewalks? Utilities, Mr. Gall?
Mr. President, I've asked Mrs. Dickey to prepare, excuse me, to prepare the report at the utilities meeting this morning, and she has an ordinance she'd like to read.
All right, Mrs. Dickey?
Yes, we have the ordinance that Dickey was...
That will be number 46.
What we discussed was, in the meeting which will give formal notes from the clerk has them ready, is the purchase of the property of Pennsylvania Avenue by utilities. Were there use with their Phase II and other things on past Phase III?
All right. Any questions for Mrs. Dickey? Seeing none, thank you. Traffic and Safety, Mrs. Mancuso?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have, my committee has not met and we have no report.
Good, thank you. Rules and Ordinances, Mrs. Dickey?
My committee is not met, but we are going to set, I mean, also for early in September to revisit the structural inspections for commercial buildings. We tabled that earlier.
Parks, Mr. Paparides?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Economic Development, Mr. Knoll?
Thank you, Mr. President. My committee did meet last night at 6:00 in council chambers. I do not have the minutes at most times, but it was really breezy. We went over, decided to record the report down on a pay-on partnership. They gave a small presentation on some ideas they had, and they're going to give us more information about that very soon. And then there's also a review of a tax incentive application I was forwarded from the Oversight Committee. Once again, I'll have more detail, I'll take it, as I speak.
All right.
Thank you.
Committee as a whole, Mr. Whitehill?
Thank you, Mr. President. Committee as a whole has not met, have no report. Currently on future agenda is the Salem, the electric aggregation discussion. Assuming that will probably be sometime in October at this point as we begin the budget process and revisit some other committee meetings as well.
Very good. That concludes the Report of Standing Committees. Move on then to Second and Third Reading of Ordinances and Resolutions. Mr. Whitehill?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the per curate ordinance 36, by title only, for its third reading this evening.
Mr. President, if I may?
Yes.
Mr. President, I'm going to ask to vote Rule 15 of Council Rules, which is a division of question, and at the appropriate time, I'd like to speak to that matter.
Well, with that, first rule, it does not need to be a vote with regard to that as I read the rule. Attorney Zellers?
That's fine.
All right, well, then I would say that would be the appropriate time. Chair, I'll recognize you.
Thank you, Mr. President. The question, medical marijuana has been bandied about in the city for about three months, but I would just like to emphasize that we're only here discussing an ordinance based upon statute that was passed by the Ohio House, the High Senate, the governor, with the aid and the input of the Ohio State Medical Association, Ohio State Nurses Association, the Ohio State Hospital Association. After a two-year process, a statute was passed last September. The point of the statute was that the medical field has indicated to the political field that there are approximately 21 serious illnesses from which people are not only ill, but dying from, so to speak, cancer, Crohn's disease, and schizophrenia, and we can go through the whole list of all the medical issues that the medical field has indicated may be some relief to some individuals. The concern, obviously, by the populace at large has put the legislature in a position that they're trying to be very protective. One is, they have specifically stated that if you are an employer and you have a drug-free workplace, if in fact you use medical marijuana as recommended by your physician, then you're tested for it, you have violated the rules and you may be fired, and there is no appeal from that firing. So the employers have certainly pointed out, and rightfully so, that you're looking at equipment, et cetera, that it might not be correct to use medical marijuana, even if it's only two-thirds, excuse me, even if it's only one-third of full strength. If you want the full marijuana high, all you have to do is ask some of the teenagers in Columbia County where to buy it, and they'll be happy to help you with that. But what we have is 21 separate diseases. And out of all this conversation we've had for the last three months, I've only had nine people personally contact me to talk about the subject. Eight of the nine are folks that indicate that they may have a medical reason to use it, and their concern is, is that one of the stringent issues of the statute says that only the patient may purchase the medical marijuana. Your spouse can't get it for you, your aid worker can't get it for you, your visiting nurse can't get it for you. Only the patient can have a card that would allow the purchase of the oil or the patch to allow this. So the issue is, is how do they get it? And this has been the discussion that has been brought to the forefront to me, is that, yes, they could drive to Alliance, they can drive to Warren, they can drive Dak, and they can drive to East Liverpool, they can drive to East Palestine, they can drive to Youngstown, all of which are allowing medical marijuana to be purchased in those locations. The issue is, though, we have before us a question as to whether or not we're going to require the sick, elderly, dying of this town to physically get in a car and go get it, because they're the ordinance that came. Now, that's a big distinction between the decisions already made by this council. This ordinance specifically says we have prohibited growth of medical marijuana within the city limits. This ordinance came out of Council as a whole, seven oh, that says we will not allow it to be produced. The distinction is whether or not we're going to allow, and there is ordinance limiting the number of dispensaries to two. But my interpretation of Rule 15 says that on demand of any member of council, a question under consideration which covers two or more points shall be divided. And I believe we have three prohibitions in this ordinance, and I believe we can vote on each of the individual prohibitions. And the one advantage is, if at any time in the future we come back to take a look at one of the prohibitions, for example, that have been voted on, we are allowed to come back and take a look at that particular question and not have to go through the whole process of vacating an ordinance and starting all over again. So I am requesting on the Rule 15 that we take a vote in the ordinance that is present and we take a deliberate vote on each of the three prohibitions, et cetera, forth in the ordinance.
I believe you're correct in what you're asking for with regards to that. And originally, just to kind of give some background, there were the first ordinance that dealt with the cultivation and processing, and then a second one that dealt with dispensing. There was an amendment made to Ordinance 36, which dealt with the cultivation and processing to add dispensing within that, which basically made the other ordinance at the time moot. So that's where we're at today, and as to your calling for the separate vote on each one of those, so we will have the clerk, and we'll start off with the first one, move to the second, and then go to the third and take a vote with regards to each of those then on this. Thought you had your hand up. So with this, Madam Clerk, if you would please read, Ordinance 36 is dealing with cultivation only at this time for its third reading this evening.
Being an ordinance creating and adopting Chapter 514 of Part 5 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Salem for the purpose of prohibiting medical marijuana cultivation within the City of Salem.
Is there any discussion?
So yes, would be that we are voting not to allow.
Correct. Any further discussion or questions?
I have one question. Is there anywhere in the city of Salem now that's known to permit either cultivation or processing?
I don't know. Attorney Zellers knows the answer. I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head.
Thank you, Mr. President. Not specifically, Mrs. Dickey. And as you know, our current code is inclusive, not exclusive. So if it doesn't allow it specifically, if it doesn't already say that they're allowed to do it, then they're not allowed to do it.
So do we really need to vote on that? Since we don't have any place known to allow that?
I guess the reason that perhaps it was discussed to put it in place, if you recall, we had a gentleman that was interested in cultivation and potentially processing. There were some machinations around that regarding our current ordinance and some of the language that's there, compounding pharmaceuticals, things of that nature. Did it qualify? Did it not qualify? So I think this was an effort to just simply put that all to rest and say it is or is not permitted.
Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, then Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on Ordinance Number 36 as to the cultivation question for passage this evening?
Mr. Whitehill?
Yes.
Mr. Paparides?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Mancuso?
Yes.
Mr. Gall?
Yes.
Mrs. Dickey?
Yes.
Passes with six yeas. I'm just going to step in here. Mr. White, don't move on. Madam Clerk, would you please read Ordinance Number 36 for its third reading as to the issue of processing?
Being an ordinance creating and adopting Chapter 514 of Part 5 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Salem for the purpose of prohibiting medical marijuana processing within the City of Salem.
Is there any discussion or questions with regards to that? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on Ordinance Number 36 as to the processing issue?
Mr. Whitehill?
Yes.
Mr. Paparides?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Mancuso?
Yes.
Mr. Gall?
Yes.
Mrs. Dickey?
Yes.
Passes 6-0. Madam Clerk, would you please read Ordinance Number 36 for its third reading with regards to the dispensing portion of this?
Being an ordinance creating and adopting Chapter 514 of Part 5 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Salem for the purpose of prohibiting medical marijuana dispensing within the City of Salem.
Is there any discussion? Mrs. Dickey?
I just want to say that, as a nurse, I've said before, I have a hard time telling a patient who has glaucoma, who has seizures, who has cancer, who has pain that is not relieved by other means, and those types of diagnoses, which are the 21 that we're talking about, that they have to drive some distance personally, or have someone take them to obtain the prescription that they need. This is a prescription that is an alternative to other medications that are available that in some cases are highly addictive, highly abused, are targets for people to steal from them, which we see in the paper all the time, people stealing their medications, especially opioids, cocaine, durit, and those things of that sort. I think that we would be denying our citizens that right to have an alternative medication that is recommended by their physician for that purpose in a limited quantity by their card that they would carry. They can't get a huge amount and would really be a benefit to them. I also think that as far as the studies about it being a drug that leads to worse drugs, I think that that study has been flawed. If you ask an addict, "Did you ever use marijuana?", and they say, "Yes", that does not mean that that was a gateway drug to that use. If you ask that same addict, "Did they ever drink alcohol? Did they ever watch television? Did they ever smoke a cigarette? Did they ever do anything that their parents told them not to do?", then you would have to consider all those things a gateway drug. To have a true study to show that it's a gateway drug, you would have to have a sampling that was equal of both people who were addicted and not addicted. And I will tell you that having graduated from high school in 1976, if you took every person in my graduating class who ever smoked marijuana and asked them if they're a drug addict or proved whether or not they were a drug addict today, I think that the numbers would be minuscule. I think even the number of those that still smoke marijuana today would be very small. So I think that that study is very flawed. I also think that after studying the way that it has been legislated, that there is the Department of Commerce that has been set up and trained now to regulate this, and there are people regulating only in our state, or the Federal Drug Administration, who takes care of the regulation of opioids, it's for the entire United States. So it is a more concentrated sampling of people who will be coming around and watching that this is done properly, especially in the very beginning infancy of this business. It is also not a cheap business to get into. To get a license is very expensive, and there's a lot of hoops to go through, so not just anybody is going to be doing this. Also, the law does not allow people to smoke marijuana. These are going to be products that are derived from the marijuana itself. This is not people, everybody that's afraid of this has told me, the thing they're afraid of is people are going to be sitting on their front porch smoking pot. And that is not what is allowed by law. What is allowed by law is a derivative that is very controlled and regulated for the purpose that, for medicinal purposes. This is also not recreational marijuana. Everybody's afraid, "Oh, this is going to lead to recreational marijuana." I believe that the way the state has regulated the medical marijuana law, that when or if they consider doing the recreational, that it will also be very well legislated and spelled out, and we will have probably the opportunity to do the same thing we're doing now and consider it city by city. That's what I believe, from the leanings of legislation at this time in the State of Ohio. So I would just ask you to really think in your heart about the people who are ill around you that you know, but what is the better alternative? To let them have a marijuana derivative, a marijuana-based medication that is not happening, or to make them rely on opioids and other medications that are much more harmful to their body as far as the studies now at this time? Thank you.
Let's start with Mr. Paparides.
Since we're going to recap, I guess, and it seems like we're rehashing an old conversation, just to bring up a couple of points. Marijuana law in the State of Ohio did make way for the use of marijuana, had a 25% strength. However, four times that dose is 100% strength. 50% is 50% of that. Same buzz. Half of the diseases that they're talking about that derive a benefit from medical marijuana doesn't need any THC to make it better. Epilepsy doesn't need the THC to cure it. There's other ingredients in the marijuana that make that possible. And the person that has cancer still has to get in the car and go to the doctor. So they're in the car regardless. They have to go to Alliance, maybe they just have to go to Salem, or they have to go 10 more miles to get to the doctor or to the hospital. But I think we're bringing up an old conversation all over again, and I think we're back to where we started. Thank you.
Mr. Whitehill?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think it was well put, Mrs. Dickey, as far as the concern. I can speak for me personally, I can't speak for others in the group, but the empathy that I feel towards those patients is what made this decision very difficult for me. I would also concur that many of these appointments are out of town. How often do you hear people say they're going to the Cleveland Clinic, or they're going to, you know, locations outside the city? Not that we don't have good oncology local, but the reality is that for many of these treatments, even my own, I went to Canton for mine, you know? So the concept that these people are absolutely unable to travel to get their medicine, I think is false. I think that's, it's maybe less convenient, but it is possible. The Department of Commerce regulating this is actually what gives me concern, the lack of experience, the fact that this program is not established yet to see what the successes or what the failures are. I said in our meeting, you know, I prefer to wait and see how that goes, quite frankly. Does it go the way the legislators intended it to? Let's be honest, we're in the middle of a federal situation right now because the plan didn't go the way the legislators wanted it to. So it can happen within our state, and I think that we need time to see how that works. And so that, for me, is kind of all I have as far as from my personal perspective. But, you know, I don't want there to be this narrative that there's a lack of empathy for the patients that need it. That's something else, case or fail, please.
Any further discussion or comment? All right, seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on Ordinance Number 36, dealing with that section as to dispensing?
Mr. Whitehill?
Yes.
Mr. Paparides?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Mancuso?
Yes.
Mr. Gall?
No.
Mrs. Dickey?
No.
Passes 4-2. Move on then. Mr. Whitehill?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend statutory rules so that Ordinance 42 can be given a second and third reading this evening.
We have a, I have a second reading listed. I'll check with the clerk. Okay. That's all right. Asking for the third reading then?
Yes, sir.
All right. Madam Clerk, would you please read Ordinance Number 42 for its third reading this evening?
Being an ordinance authorizing the Director of Public Services and Safety to advertise for bids and enter into contract for the sale of unused 2006 Ford Crown Victoria.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll on Ordinance Number 42 for passage this evening?
Mr. Whitehill?
Yes.
Mr. Paparides?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Mancuso?
Yes.
Mr. Gall?
Yes.
Mrs. Dickey?
Yes.
That passes with six yeas. Mr. Whitehill?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend council rules so that Resolution 44 can be considered this evening.
All right, is there a second on that? Mr. Knoll? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Dickey?
Yes.
Mr. Gall?
Yes.
Mrs. Mancuso?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Mr. Paparides?
Yes.
Mr. Whitehill?
Yes.
Think council rules are suspended. Mr. Whitehill?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend stat-
Mr. Whitehill?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend statutory rules so that Resolution 44 can be given its first, second, and third reading.
All right, is there a second on that? Mr. Paparides? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Whitehill?
Yes.
Mr. Paparides?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Mancuso?
Yes.
Mr. Gahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dickey?
Yes.
Statutory rules are suspended. Mr. Whitehill?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move, Clerk, to read Resolution 44 by title only for its first, second, and third readings this evening.
All right, Madam Clerk, would you please read Resolution Number 44 by title only for its first, second, and third readings this evening?
Being a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, I'm sorry, did I, was it not 44 for Columbia County and 45 for Mahone County?
That's correct.
Is that the order that we did then?
Yes, we're on Columbia County.
We're on Number 44. That's what we're on right now.
So we did 45 first?
No.
Was it 44?
Yes. You're welcome. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll on Resolution Number 44 for passage this evening?
Mr. Whitehill?
Yes.
Mr. Paparides?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Mancuso?
Yes.
Mr. Gahl?
No.
Mrs. Dickey?
Yes.
That passes with six yeas. Mr. Whitehill?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend council rules on Resolution 45. Sorry. I want to be clear.
Is there a second on that?
All right.
Mrs. Mancuso? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Whitehill?
Yes.
Mr. Paparides?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Mancuso?
Yes.
Mr. Gahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dickey?
Yes.
I think council rules are suspended. Mr. Whitehill?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend statutory rules on Resolution 45.
All right, is there a second with that? Mrs. Dickey? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Dickey?
Yes.
Mr. Gahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Mancuso?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Mr. Paparides?
Yes.
Mr. Whitehill?
Yes.
All right, statutory rules are suspended. Mr. Whitehill?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Clerk read Resolution 45 by title only for its first, second, and third reading.
All right, Madam Clerk, would you please read Resolution Number 45 by title only for its first, second, and third readings this evening?
Being a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on Resolution Number 45 for passage this evening?
Mr. Whitehill?
Yes.
Mr. Paparides?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Mancuso?
Yes.
Mr. Gahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dickey?
Yes.
That passes with six yeas. Mrs. Dickey?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask that we suspend council rules so that Ordinance 46 can be considered today.
All right, is there a second on that? Mr. Whitehill?
Mr. President, I would point a privilege, please.
Yes, sir.
The ordinance that's before City Council deals with a piece of real property that is owned by an LLC. The LLC is Pennsylvania Avenue Land Company LLC. You're all aware that this is an individual, separate, distinct legal entity. However, one of the shareholders of the Pennsylvania Avenue Land Company LLC is Mr. Joseph Horff. My daughter is engaged to the son of Mr. Joseph Horff, and it has been a subject matter of quite public interest, a new my daughter has been engaged to in the past in this chamber. I asked to be allowed to withdraw, not only from the consideration of this bill, I made a point of not appearing at my own utility committee meeting today and thank Mrs. Dickey for handling it, but I allowed, I asked council to allow me not to have the vote on this issue.
All right. Under Rule 14, I believe it is, Mr. Zellers, with that, you have asked, you've stated a reason with regards to that which is required at this time, then I will call a roll call vote of council as to if they accept this and if they will allow Mr. Gahl to abstain from this vote. So Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Whitehill?
Yes.
Mr. Paparides?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Mancuso?
Yes.
Mrs. Dickey?
Yes.
All right, she'll be excused and allowed to abstain from the vote with regards to Ordinance Number 46, assuming that we get that far with it. There was the motion to suspend the council rules. Is that correct? And we did not get to a roll call on that, did we? No. All right, is there a second on that? Mr. Whitehill, I believe, did before. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Whitehill?
Yes.
Mr. Paparides?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Mancuso?
Yes.
Mrs. Dickey?
Yes.
All right. With that then, council rules are suspended. Mrs. Dickey?
I would like to ask that statutory rules be suspended so that we could consider Ordinance 46 for all three readings this evening with the emergency clause.
I would do that, but since we're short, Mr. Brown, and we require that we have six votes to be able to do that, and Mr. Gahl can't, I just would suggest that we have a first reading this evening.
It's time sensitive with the purchase.
Well, if we have to call another meeting, a special meeting with regards to it, we will, but we're bound by the rules that we have to follow with regards to this, so I think that's the only action based upon the suspension of the council rules that we can take this evening.
That's correct.
I would just have a first reading if you don't mind.
All right. Madam Clerk, would you please give a first reading to Ordinance Number 46 this evening?
Being an ordinance authorizing the Salem Utilities Commission of the City of Salem to purchase approximately 6.88 acres of real property located along Pennsylvania Avenue, City of Salem, Perry Township, Columbia County, Ohio, identified as parcel number 5107220.000 and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. That concludes the reading of introduction of ordinances and resolutions. Move on, therefore, to pleasure of, well, before we do that, Mr. Weingart, let me ask with regards to this, what is the time nature of this is, because as you know, previous meeting, we had voted and determined that we would not be meeting in August. Is this going to cause a problem if it waits until the first meeting of September, or do you need us to call a special?
I would, Mr. Chairman, to talk to you, talk to the agents and handle this and go back to you.
No, that's, that's fine. I just didn't, Attorney Zellers?
And Mr. Weingart, if I may, I recall that there's a Phase 1 environmental study required, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah. How long does that take? Do you have any?
Probably in two weeks.
Oh, that's all, that's okay. Thank you, sir.
All right, just if you would check on that then, I'd appreciate that. Thank you. All right, we will move on to pleasure of council at this time. Mr. Gahl?
Just the thought process. I asked council to allow me to abstain from the vote on the ordinance. I did not ask to be allowed to abstain from council rules.
I'll defer to, I, I still have my thoughts that if you didn't show up for, as you indicated, for the meeting this evening.
That's correct. I was not part of the committee meeting, but it doesn't mean that I, I'm just asking, is it not physically possible for me to vote for, excuse me, not the contents of the ordinance, but to allow the council to hear the ordinance? That's the question.
I understand. I, I have my own thoughts with regards to it that I'd rather err on the side of caution, and I think that by doing that, it allows it to go forward, and by virtue of allowing it to go forward, allows it to be voted on this evening. If Attorney Zellers has another thought, I'm certainly open to it.
I would agree with you, Mr. R.
Well, I apologize to council, to Mr. Weingart, and to the city for being put into a position, and I emphasize the fact that you're dealing with a separate legal entity, and there's absolutely no benefit whatsoever to I or any member of my family, but as you indicated, caution seems to be in the wind these days, so, thank you.
Anything for the pleasure of council then that you wish to offer?
Well, one nice thing about City Council is that the president has been kind enough to allow some of us to be part of other civic organizations in town, and I have been asked to be a liaison between City Council and the Historical Society. And I have been asked tonight to announce that July 29 marks the 70th anniversary of the society's founding, Mr. Harris and Mr. Engle, and the community is invited for a free porch party to celebrate this milestone on July 29 of '68. There would be food, beverages, music, et cetera. And then the first ghost tour on Quaker Town Trolley is July 27, starting the day of clock. And, Mr. President, I ask this to be my last report because a member of City Council by the name of Andrew Knoll has been elected to the board of the Historical Society, and maybe that individual would like to be appointed as the liaison to the Salem Historical Society.
Maybe in the future that will occur.
Thank you.
Mr. Knoll?
I have nothing to say.
Mrs. Mancuso?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing tonight.
All right. Mr. Paparides?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Mrs. Dickey?
I just want to thank everybody on this council and everybody who contributed to this medical marijuana issue. There were very strong opinions coming in and coming at us from all directions. There were a lot of fears, there were a lot of facts that needed to be studied. Even though we don't all agree on our opinions on things, I think we all have mutual respect for those opinions and know that it's coming from a place that's good and decent and very well thought out. So I want to thank everybody for that time. This has been difficult. I also want to give my condolences to the family of Donna Sweet, who was a very dear previous neighbor on Southeast Boulevard, her years across the street from me as she passed last week.
Mr. Whitehill?
Again, what said, Mrs. Dickey, that I'm proud of the body that we have as far as the way we can have different opinions and we can convey them always with respect, and that has not always been the case in the past, in previous years, far back. And so I concur with that, well, these situations are difficult and opinions are important. At the end of the day, we vote and we vote forward as a group, so, thank you.
All right. And I would add to that, that when I first came on council, was sitting over there that evening, I said that we don't always have to agree, nor do I think should we, because I don't think that that's good for government, but I said we can always conduct ourselves as ladies and gentlemen, certainly on a very hot issue as this. I think everybody should be commended for that, and I'm proud to be a part of this organization. With that, the meeting's adjourned.